All right, ladies and gentlemen, you are ready to begin our regular scheduled board of education meetings. So once again, thank you all for attending. Let the record show that all board members are present. And at this time, we ask everybody to stand for questions. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
I am glad we are in the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It seems like everyone from the high state, the Mississippi State, that's good. Hope you all enjoyed that presentation as much as I did. I do have one announcement I'd like to make. So a few weeks ago, the New York State Office, the State Controller released its report regarding the audit of the West Side of School District. On June 24th, UZ released the report regarding the fine case. A stated about letter to the community. The article implied that errors were made in drafting budgets in 2017 through 2018, a 2017-18 year for the 2020-21 school years. And that the district was not transparent about its surplus funds. Again, I repeat that the district takes exception to this characterization and urge you to read the entire OSC audit and the district's response. It can be found on our website. I again state that the recommendations that were made are simply that. There was no penalty, no fines attached to any of the findings. I'd also like to take a moment to introduce our Assistant Superintendent of Business, Ms. Lisa Palladi, who's put together a presentation which will explain fund balance and reserves and highlight OSC audit, so that everyone can have a clear and better understanding as to what the situation is. Please note that the information Ms. Palladi is about to present has been publicly discussed during our previous budget meetings, committee meetings, and regular Board of Education meetings. So on that note, Ms. Palladi.
Thank you, Ms. Palladi. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will be going over fund balance and reserves as well as comments that were received during the district's most exploited by the Office of State Council for the OSC. Fund balance is the total accumulation of operating surpluses and deficits since the beginning of school districts' existence. There are a number of reasons why having fund balance is important for students. Fund balance provides financial stability, which is helpful when there are years when unforeseen expenditures or even revenue shortcuts such as a state aid shortcut happens. Districts depend heavily on state aid, which can sometimes be an unstable source of revenue. Our district represents about 27% of our revenue contribution, I'm sorry, state aid. It's the second largest source of revenue for our district. State revenues are highly sensitive to business cycle, and when the economy is in recession, state aid does not typically keep up or completion, and it can easily come down. When revenue declines and costs continue to rise, schools essentially have three options. They can increase taxes to pay for programs and services, which we all know is restricted by the tax levy limit. They can reduce or eliminate programs and services, which is also not good for students. Or they can rely on their fund balance and reserves as an additional revenue source to help balance their budget. Over the past several years, West Side has been admitted to having healthy fund balance. The district has received favorable interest rates for our bonds, our TAN, and our EPC borrowings. As you are aware, a TAN is a bond anticipation note. That is what you go out for when your turnover is waiting to quite equally bond you or if you're a bond that went out for. A tax anticipation note is a TAN. And the EPC borrowing is an energy performance contract. Many of you might recall that we used to sleep with solar panels on buildings, the way we find it is through an EPC borrowing. In July 2021, Moody's Investor Services upgraded the issue order rating on the district's general population box from AA3 to AA2 due to the healthy financial position of the district. And it grew up to 300,000, really good. The amount of fund balance maintained by our district is a large component of how these rating agencies such as Moody's determine bond ratings. Creditors look to Moody's ratings to decide how much credit to extend to a district. And the bond rating has a direct impact on the interest rate the district pays on loans. Every year, the OSC assigns a district, each district in New York State, a fiscal stress score. The Office of State Council's fiscal stress score provides a baseline measurement of a school district from a budgetary solvency perspective. So in other words, the OSC is measuring whether a school district is generating enough revenue to pay all their expenditures. Fund balance is actually one of the four things that the OSC looks at to measure fiscal stress, and it accounts for a half of the point value that is assigned by the OSC. Our district has had a fiscal stress level of no designation for the last six years, which is excellent. West Side has also negatively impacted in the past at a time when we had a very low fund balance. Many of you might remember the gap elimination adjustment for the GPA. That was first introduced in 2010-11 as a way to close New York State's then $10 billion budget. Under the GPA, a portion of the state's funding shortages divided among all the districts in New York. And then based on a formula, each addition of state aid was just reduced accordingly. Districts had to deal with the cumulative impacts of consecutive years of state aid losses resulting from this GPA. The impact was detrimental to students in the form of increased class sizes, cuts to personnel, reduced programs and services, reducing or eliminating athletes, closing school buildings, and depletion of district reserves for those districts who were lucky enough to have them. West Side has incurred a $20 million GPA reduction in state aid from 2010-11 through 2015-16. If something similar were to happen in the future, West Side is better prepared for cuts in state aid as we now have much healthier fund balance. The district's fund balance actually made up of four different parts. You have the non-spendable, which is the C-Fund. That's the cafeteria one or food service fund. And that represents all of your inventory and prepaid items. Then you have the restricted portion of fund balance, which is essentially your reserves. There's the assigned fund balance, which is appropriated and unappropriated. And lastly, you have the unassigned fund balance. This is generally known as the 4% balance because it cannot be more than 4% of the next year's budget. I would take you through the last three areas of fund balance because they relate to the general fund. That's what we call the C-Fund, doesn't impact our budget. Reserve funds are the first component of fund balance that we will be covering. Reserves allow a district to save money to finance future capital projects, equipment, or other requirements. It reduces reliance on acquiring debt to finance capital projects. And they allow districts to remain flexible and financially stable by providing a budgetary option in times where they might need to reduce or eliminate some programs and services. These are West Side's current reserves. As you see up here, we have the Employee Dedicated Approved Liability Reserve, what is the ERS Reserve. We have the Employee Retirement Contribution Reserve, what is the ERS Reserve. The Teachers Retirement Contribution Reserve, or the TRS Reserve. Workers' Compensation, Unemployment, and we have a Capital Reserve and most recently, the new Capital Reserve Fund Two. So the ERS Reserve was established by Board Resolution on October 9th, 2003. This reserve is used to pay for any approved employee benefit that is due to an employee when they separate from the district. This typically includes payment for a sick leave, personal leave, or vacation days, and it's typically paid out as compensated absence when the employee needs to retire. It is recommended that this reserve be funded at 100% of the approved liability while unused to pay for new time. So each year, we are required to create a compensated absence report, a calculation that we must do for every single employee in the district. And that calculation is audited by our district auditors. And that year-end balance, you see here as of 6/30/21, represents 100% of that report, which is represented by the workers. And I just want to point out that the balances you will see in the next few slides say as of 6/30/2021 due to the fact that the 6/30/2022 numbers are not final yet. But we are going through our year-end audit currently, so those are not final. So the auditors sign off on our budgetary statements, and they're sent to the Board for review. The next reserve, the ERS Reserve, was established by Board Resolution on September 14th, 2006. This reserve is used to pay for the required district contributions to the ERS system. This reserve is funded for any excess fund balance that's remaining at year-end. A funding level of up to five years of retirement billings is deemed appropriate for using to apply our auditors. And that balance you see there represents approximately $5 million. The TRS Reserve was established recently by Board Resolution on May 9th, 2013. This is considered a sub-fund of the ERS Reserve and is used to pay for the required district contribution to the TRS fund. Annual funding of the TRS Reserve is limited to 2% of total compensation paid during the prior years to teachers or members of TRS. And the fund's total balance did not exceed 10% of teacher compensation paid during the prior fiscal year. So as of 6/30/21, you can see our reserve balance is at almost $2.5 million, and it is not considered a funding. Workers' Compensation Reserve was established many decades ago, but as noted by the OSC in their audit, the district was unable to locate the Board Resolution that established this reserve. This reserve is used to pay for compensation, benefits, expenses, anything that's authorized by the Workers' Compensation law, and it's made in excess of administering self-insurance for revenue to the district tax. This reserve should be adequate to stabilize the district's contributions to workers' compensation, which can vary in cycles with claims experience. A reasonable funding level is the amount of future claims to be paid as part of the district's Workers' Compensation Select and Qualification Report. We receive that report on a yearly basis via the Recording Benefit Administrator, Frank Russ. As of 6/30/21, that amount is approximately $900,000. So as noted in the OSC report, this reserve is overfunded. This reserve was increased in the past because there was a lot of uncertainties surrounding COVID-19-related workers' comp cases and long-term COVID cases that would be eligible for workers' compensation. Now that we have more information, we do agree that there are funds in this reserve that could be pre-purposed in another reserve. Based on the estimated seasonal funding level, the district could transfer approximately $2.1 million from this reserve into the newly established Capital Reserve Fund Two. The district has also taken steps to reduce the '22-'23 budgeted expenditure for workers' compensation and will be appropriating $250,000 from this reserve. So essentially, that means we lower our budget for '22-'23 by the $250,000, and we are going to use the reserve as a source of income, as a source of revenue to help fund that expense for an industry area for workers currently. The Unemployed Reserve was also established many decades ago, but as noted in the OSC audit, the district was not able to locate the Board Resolution that established the reserve. This reserve is used to reimburse the state for payments made to claimants where the district uses credit to reimburse them. A funding level equal to up to five years of average annual expense is deemed appropriate. And as of last year, that amount would have been $30,000. Again, OSC noted that this reserve is overfunded. And similar to the workers' comp cases, we also increased, we're also foreseeing an increased number of unemployed claims during COVID. So now that we have more information, we are able to, to create the OSC that some funds in this reserve can be pre-purposed. Based on the estimated seasonal funding level, the district could potentially transfer $1.5 million from this reserve into the Capital Reserve Fund Two that was recently established. This district has also reduced the budgeted expenditure for unemployment costs for '22-'23 by approximately $90,000. The very first Capital Reserve was established and approved by the community during the May 2018 budget. This reserve is used to fund the cost of any project for which bonds can be issued, such as construction project or a very large piece of equipment. Capital Reserve funds allow a district to save money for future projects that would otherwise have to be funded through the bonds, which will want to increase your cost over year, or through your annual budget, which again impacts your tax levy and end costs of the district. So the use of a Capital Reserve comes at no additional cost to taxpayers. This reserve has a maximum limit of $20 million plus investment income. The Capital Reserve is funded through remaining surplus monies at year-end. And as of our last fiscal year-end, 2021, we have about $6 million to give this Capital Reserve. However, this slide shows you the activity that has happened since its inception. So when it first started, we were able to fund the Capital Reserve in 2018-19 with $2 million. Then in 1920, we were able to fund the Capital Reserve with another $2 million plus interest income. And the same happened in 2021. So that leaves us with the $6 million balance. However, the community didn't authorize spending from this Capital Reserve during the last two budget calls. So on May 18th, 2021, seven projects were authorized with a spending amount of not to exceed of $1.7 million. And just recently in May, in our last budget call, the community again authorized the spending amount not to exceed $2.9 million for six different projects. So that would make the current net balance of this current Capital Reserve $1.4 million. This is just a recap of the seven projects that were approved back in May of 2021. And I wanted to take you through them because there were so many delays due to COVID and some abnormally high hit results. So district-wide, the water bottle filling stations are all going to be installed before the first day of school. At Nanate, we will be installing air conditioning in what's in the main office, the nurse's office, in the early fall. This was delayed due to an abnormal high dam result as well as very long equipment lease times delays in this supply chain. As most people thought, you know, the campus-style fencing at the high school on Montauk Highway in Lively Lane has not completed. Four rest of renovations at the high school, the baby building completed before the first day of school. The paving at Baby View will be completed also before the first day of school. And auditoriums and turntables here at the high school have been replaced. And we were placing that interior wall in freezer and refrigerator of a high school early in 2022-23 school year, and this was another delay, a major delay due to COVID. And just another important thing to point out with any capital project, these are not to exceed authorization, it's their estimates. So if we come in under budget for some of these projects, any unspent funds are just simply returned back to the Capital Reserve. So with the most recent budget, we had the approval of another six projects. So these projects were approved again not to exceed $2.9 million. District-wide, we are installing a security window on all of the building windows on the first floor of all school buildings where students are on the bus. And these projects should be completed hopefully by the first day of school, but we will definitely update September. At the high school in New York, the middle school, we renovated a total of 12 tax floors. And the remaining four projects to see here have not yet been started. They are extending that campus-style fencing toward the high school on Lively Lane. Beach and Road renovated to a total of six restaurants. At Paul J. Lewis, we've created additional parking spaces. At the high school, we will replace all of the building firewalls. So the Capital Reserve Fund Two was recently established and reviewed by committee during the May '22 budget. The Capital Reserve is funded through remaining surplus monies at year-end or transfers from existing reserves. That's how it differs from the first Capital Reserve. This reserve has a maximum limit of $30 million plus investment income. The Capital Reserve Fund Two will have a balance as of June 30th, 2022, as it can be partially funded from the excess reserve balance of the workers' comp reserve, the unemployment reserve, and any partially remaining fund balance at year-end. The last two types of fund balance are unassigned and assigned. Unassigned fund balance is unrestricted and essentially can be used for any valid purpose. However, it is recommended that these funds will be used for very significant unanticipated expenses or revenue shortcuts that cannot be handled through either your budget or with another available reserve. Real property tax law limits the amount of unspent surplus funds that the district can retain to no more than 4% of the next year's budget. So West Side has always been at or below the statutory level of 4%. And I do want to clarify that non-spendable, restricted, and assigned fund balance are excluded from the 4% calculation. They are not included when you're calculating 4%. So I put up a calculation, as you can see here, as of 6/30/21, the balance was $5.1 million. And that simply represented, assuming your budget was 21-22, for $127.5 million times 4%, very straightforward calculation. Assigned fund balance are funds that are appropriated for the subsequent year's budget to reduce the levy. Based on the OSC's audit and the last five years of our historical operating results, over the next several years, it is recommended that the planned amount of assigned fund balance included as a revenue source in the budget gradually decrease. The district does agree with this comment, but had actually began to lower this amount pre-COVID. But then COVID happened, and we were forced to bring it back to a historic value of $4 million. So the district will be reducing this amount to $850,000. So now that we've covered all the different types of fund balance that exist, I just want to take you through why a district has fund balance or why there would be a surplus at year-end, some of the major reasons. So school district budgets are essentially a district's plan for the upcoming year as relates to anticipated revenues and expenditures. There are always going to be uncertainties during budget development, such as health insurance costs for the second half of this year are always unknown because we're on a fiscal year from July 1st to 30th, and health insurance rates are on a calendar year from January 1st to December 31st. If the district is in negotiations with a bargaining unit, estimates must be used on what the salary investments will be if the contracts have not yet been settled. The cost for services for students with disabilities can also be very unpredictable as services replacements can indeed change throughout this new year. Retirements and the use of absence that are announced after a budget is adopted can create a significant surplus in the following year. Just as an example, what a district budgets for a veteran teacher's salary in the next year, but that teacher announces their retirement very late in the year, then we begin to hire a new teacher, but let's say step one, that creates significant savings for the district in the following year, which introduces to surplus. Unanticipated revenues, such as an increase in the amount of state aid or reinforcements, can also lead to a surplus. This is also true for federal stimulus funds that were not anticipated. As an example, our district actually received $215,000 of CARES Fund money about two years ago, and we chose to use that money to pay the NLL teams, about two TEAs. So that was unanticipated revenue in the general plan. We had already budgeted for those teacher salaries. So as of year-end, we didn't have to assess that salary for those two teachers, we created a budget savings for surplus. The COVID-19 pandemic greatly contributed to the surplus that resulted in both 2019-20 and 2021 school years. The pandemic greatly impacted the revenue of youth schools and dealing with all of our vital operations and presented several challenges for the 2021 budget. During that time, districts were warned of a potential 20% state aid cut, and we all budgeted to prepare for that. So when that didn't come to fruition, many districts, in West Side, were likely to significantly more fund balance than we had anticipated. This chart was included in the OSC's audit report. It represents four years' worth of variances between what was budgeted and what was cut. And as you can see, the total of the four years' worth of variances equals that $24.6 million that I mentioned. So over the past four years, the district has spent an average of 95% of its budget. By most measures, spending at the 95% level indicates that reasonable and accurate estimates of expenditures were made during the budget development process. The last two years were significantly impacted by COVID-19, and that drove the average percentage of budgets spent down due to that additional unanticipated fund balance. Because you can see in 2017-18 and 2019, we were at 96%. The external auditors recommend ending the chair with no more than 2% to 5% of remaining appropriations. And these four years actually averaged just under 1%. So this is a summary of the district's corrective actions in response to the audit. The district does budget conservatively for special education needs based on the inherent volatility in this area. But we also recognize the comment that was made by the OSC. They summary review of historical expenditures, the district did reduce the 2022-23 budget for special ed add to district tuition and OCS services by approximately $1.5 million. The district is also in agreement with the use of appropriated fund balance that was actually evidenced in our reserve plan the last few fiscal years. He lowered the appropriated fund balance, as I mentioned, but again, had to restore it because of COVID. So we are once again committed to gradually reducing that balance, as seen here, we're lowering it down to $850,000. The district does establish reserves by Board Resolution, however, it was challenging to find those two resolutions from many decades ago that established our workers' comp and unemployment reserves. The establishment of each reserve is now documented in the district's reserve plan. And beginning with the 21-22 reserve plan, we also now include optimal funding levels in that plan. Based on the OSC review, the district has also decreased the '22-'23 budget for workers' compensation and compensated absences. And we will appropriate $250,000 for each of those related reserves for next year. And lastly, as I mentioned previously, the excess monies from the workers' compensation reserve and the unemployment reserve can be transferred from those reserves to the Capital Reserve Fund Two, less than June 30th, 2022. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Palladi, for that. And I know this is, a lot of work goes into this. And from, from the review of this, it's, you know, there's certainly complications that normally that we don't deal with in terms of our normal day-to-day life. So I just want to kind of summarize from a perspective of what happened over the last, you know, since 2008. I go back to 2008, you know, the financial collapse around us. I go back to two thousand eight, you know, the financial world collapsed around us. So I just want to kind of summarize from my perspective, as a parent, community member, and as a board member, kind of what this is probably to run through and the details of the numbers. So in two thousand eight, the world collapsed. Two thousand and ten, the gap elimination, the state tried to close their budget gap, as this blog said, by reducing the amount of state aid that we were going to receive, it was a substantial amount. By two thousand and thirteen, we were in moderate fiscal distress, which no one wants to be in, where the rates go up. So part of that, the board at the time, and started to recognize that we need to put more money in reserves and savings accounts so that we have, we cover ourselves for times of uncertainty. Fast forward to two thousand seventeen, eighteen, the reserves were starting to get to good levels. And two thousand and eighteen, the discussion of the First Capital Reserve took place, where we said, all right, let's take some of these funds and start to utilize them for projects around the school. Most of the schools were built in the nineteen fifties, so we know we have to continuously maintain and improve the schools. So we get to that point in eighteen, in nineteen, that was approved, you know, we fund that balance. And we also said, all right, there's still, you know, there's still possibly more here, and let's take, keep an eye on that. Well, two thousand twenty, as Mrs. Palladi said, COVID hits. We are told that we could potentially receive a twenty percent reduction in state aid. So now even though our reserves were healthy, we started to use some of the Capital Reserve. All of this approved and discussed in meetings. And some of this was, you know, before I came on the board, going to the budget meetings where I learned of the First Capital Reserve, and the reasons that was put into place because of the reserves. So as you come to the budget meetings, a lot of that's explained. Again, some of that can be confusing if you don't really deal with numbers on a day-to-day basis, but it's all explained in that fashion. So we get to two thousand twenty, potential twenty percent reduction in state aid could be ten to fourteen million dollars or those reserves aren't as healthy. We make the decision to say, let's, you know, we've got to make sure that we stay physically sound. We get through that time. Expenses also were reduced a little bit during that time because we didn't have extracurricular activities, the sports are reduced. So there was a combination of additional, potential loss of funds and reduced expenses. Well, it turns out, with all the federal money that came in, money was coming in to keep us at the right levels, knowing that we had asked, asked for our internal orders to do an audit of our fund balances. This is twenty twenty, I believe. So our, our external office, Colin Danaski, just went through all our fund balances and came back with a favorable rating that they were legally set up and that we were using the appropriate way. So we just wanted to check along the way, again, all this is discussed in our meetings. And then come here towards the end of this COVID, we start to look at this budget and we get to saying, all right, we, we understand there's money in reserves. Let's go to the community and start the Second Capital Reserve that can be used to take some of those reserves and spend them on capital projects. Again, voted on by the community, approved, and that's we'll start to do this. And also, we're using some of the other reserves to, to lower some of the budget expenses. So I just give that overview because it was sixteen years or fourteen years of, you get a lot of uncertainty, we're in fiscal distress, we want to make sure that we're approved as to what we're doing. This, most of this happened, you know, before a lot of us were on the board, but the board at that time realized it. We get to a more uncertainty, and that's why you see in two nineteen, twenty, twenty-twenty-one, you know, the variance goes up a bit because it was uncertain. We didn't know the dollars that we were going to get. Now that we have a clearer picture of that, and we live in a state where it's not always clear what's going to happen from a year-to-year basis, but we have some projections to start to use those funds out there. So just wanted to give an overview from that perspective because this isn't intuitive all the time. But again, a lot of it, all of it was discussed at meetings, a lot comes up with the budget presentation meetings, which we start in, usually in April, before meetings, the fund reserve. That's, as a parent, that's when I found out of the First Capital Reserve, but I thought it was a great mechanism to start using some of these improvements that were needed without raising taxes. So just wanted to give that overview as, again, as a parent and community member, and now as a board member to see, this is, this is where we are today, health, obviously in a healthy financial situation, and dealing with some of the reserves that we can use to help the, the projects around the schools. So thanks for your presentation.
All right, thank you, Mrs. McCann, and again, thank you so much, Ms. Palladi, and how much time and effort you put into that presentation. As far as other announcements, this is my turn. Because I just want to identify two very special people that are to my left, whose careers are headed in completely opposite directions. I would like to welcome Dr. Paul Romanelli here to his first official West High School Board meeting. Thank you. And of course, we do have Miss Burns, who is here at our official last West High School Board meeting. So. At this time, is there anyone who has anything they'd like to discuss regarding an agenda item? Okay. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of the July fifth, two thousand twenty-two reorganization meeting and the July fifth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting? Someone? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. On to personnel, Mrs. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. I'm going to be doing the probationary appointments and retirements individually, and then the rest of the agenda will be approved by consent. May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Sophia Surpleinhardt, effective August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, to August twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-six? Someone?
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Sophia is here. Can you stand up? May I have a motion for the approval of Stephanie Nicku, music, effective August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, to August twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-six?
Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
Is Stephanie here?
Give a round of applause.
May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Kelly Minkowski, elementary counselor, effective August twelfth, twenty-twenty-two, to August eleventh, twenty-twenty-six?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Kelly is here. Kelly, if you can stand up. May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of John T. Geniger, physical education, effective August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, to August twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-six?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
John? May I have a motion for the approval of the retirement of Diane Calvarone, effective August first, twenty-twenty-two, after eight years? Someone?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the probationary appointment of Angelina Archer, part-time food service worker, effective August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Ludmilla Byli, custodial worker one, effective August twelfth, twenty-twenty-two?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Mark Romocco, custodial worker two, effective August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Pasquale Romeo, head custodian, effective August twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of Lisa Schweiger, part-time food service worker, effective August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
May I have a motion for the approval of the rest of the personnel agenda as listed on the agenda, listed in your background?
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. On to our current update with Mrs. Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. Good evening, everybody. And we'd just like to take this opportunity to share that the district is looking forward to welcoming our teachers and staff back to school on Monday, August twenty-ninth, with Superintendent's Conference Day. We have a keynote speaker coming in to motivate our staff, and we are looking forward to collaborative time to meet and prepare for the arrival of our students on Tuesday, August thirtieth. I would also like to take this opportunity to welcome a whole bunch of our new teachers to the district with new teacher orientation. It will be running for three days at the end of August. I find the most exciting part is on the third day, we take a bus tour of the district. So if you see a bus driving around and hear someone narrating where we are, please give us a wave because the new teachers are always happy to see the residents and some of their students. I would also just like to take one moment to, again, acknowledge Mrs. Burns and to thank her for her time and dedication to the school district, and I certainly wish her the best of luck in a long, healthy retirement.
Mrs. Morrison, I do have one question. I know when Santa Claus comes around, the fire trucks, they're usually in the streets all the time.
Yes.
You don't have that for new teachers that we could all wait outside.
Oh, I do have actually a flow chart where we know, so I could share that with you.
Okay, I do look forward to that. All right, thank you so much. Let's move on to our report of our board committees, starting with the Education Committee, Mrs. Antonello.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Ed Committee met yesterday August tenth at B H G Library. All board members present. My addition, attendance was Superintendent Burne, Assistant Superintendent Lisa Palladi, Assistant Superintendent Mrs. Morrison, Mrs. Taylor. Also in attendance was new superintendent, Dr. Romanelli. Start at seven P M. The June assessments complete. District principals and department directors will analyze the results and present it to the board in the coming months. Summer school ends on the fifteenth of August, and readings will be next week. The summer K through five initiative program took place this July. Reading, writing, and net support provided for students. Student progress from that program will also be shared with principals. Staff developers also provide this summer. The teachers, instructional technology, foundations, revealed math, and first aid. The district is working on increasing the number of parent academies. This summer, there was a special ed academy, one-on-one. Future academies will include information on standard-based grading, elementary literacy, and new K through four math program. Standard-based grading of court cards will go into effect this year as K through five. These court cards should better reflect student progress on educational standards. A new school counselor has been approved tonight to help give the social, emotional needs of the students. Now one to the north, and one to the south side of town. The assistant grade will be implementing a new news literacy program. Six middle school social studies teachers trained this summer and studied for university. The district will be doing the panorama survey again this year to help identify students at risk. And lastly, the district is embarking on a curriculum review. It's a healthy thing to do every few years to make sure that the curriculum meets the needs of students. And the meeting ended at seven thirty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Antonello. On to the Finance Committee with Mr. McGiffes.
Thank you. We met on August tenth, and Mr. McGiffes, who is now the president, for Miss Kelly, Mr. McCann, and himself. One of the board members who attended, Mr. Antonello was proud, Mr. Capitale, Mr. Tussi. Administrator's present, Superintendent Burns, Deputy Superintendent Dr. Romanelli, Assistant Superintendent Lisa Palladi, and Assistant Superintendent Paul Currie, who has instruction is lost. Meeting was called at quarter at seven thirty-five. Following reports were presented and accepted by the committee. The school, for the treasures reports, the school district funds and extra curricular funds for the month of May. The payable summary report, financial status report for the month of May as well. We have the month of May reports, we will not have June, probably in close September when the party perhaps up. So of course, we're taking a longer. The internal claims quota report for May, June, and July was presented. The system manager Florida Travel Report was presented for June and July. The payable certification for June tenth, twenty-fourth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, July eighth, July fifteenth, and July twenty-ninth were presented. The warrants were received by the committee. We will review the following board agenda findings. Approval of the budget transfers, approval of the tax levies for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three for our school year. Approval of change of order number one for Black Rome plumbing, twenty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars per beach for the generator. Approval of a donation and a subsequent increase to the budget for five hundred dollars from Energy, Department of Alliance Energy, West High School. And surplus of books and yoga rooms. We also approved or discussed approval of breast prep, the exemption for twenty-two, twenty-three. Approval of income eligibility badge for the free reduced lunch for twenty-two, twenty-three. Approval of RFPs for twenty-two, twenty-three, number five and eight for beverages, and five nine nine for direct divert. Approval of a list of contacts that tracks that are in the agenda. And approval of right to risk management agreement for July first, twenty-twenty-two, to June thirty, twenty-twenty-five. We also discussed that the external auditors, R S Aprils, are on site at least August twenty-second to do the unit testing for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Each year, the U S D A requires the district to complete a P equity capillary to determine if they are charging enough for school meals. We are, based on that capulation, eligible to raise prices on school meals. But the board agreed to keep the prices the same as pre-pandemic. It was also noted that the prep program will now be offered at all middle schools and conditions in the high school. Last item, a resident requested that budget transfer be posted in the board agenda backup on the district website. The information is currently in finance agenda backup. The board agreed to this request, and we begin posting the budget transfers for this school year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McGiffes. We now have our Building and Grounds Committee with Mrs. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The Buildings and Grounds Committee also met on yesterday, August tenth, at seven forty-five P M. All board members were in attendance, committee members. Administration in attendance was Mrs. Burns, Dr. Romanelli, Mrs. Morrison, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Bossy, and members of the B B S and S C C, which is our outside engineers consulting firm. This is probably the busiest time of the year for the Buildings and Grounds team. Most, a lot of the projects that happened in the capital improvement and also the bond projects happened in the summer. Makes it better time when the students are here. So there's a lot of work going on at a lot of different schools. The solar roof project is still underway and is almost complete. We do have some backwater items that we're waiting for at the high school, and we're waiting for P S E D G to give final approval on that project. So that will be up and running shortly. We did put the security films. We should have those all finished on all the first-floor windows in all the schools. The next schools that are working on are Open Oak, Magnetuck, and Udel. But we're gearing for the, the close of, have that all done before the start of the year. Air conditioners in the cafeteria should be ready and be done by the opening of school. It will take a couple of days, again, because a lot of work being done. The cafes and the kitchen areas, the auditoriums will be next. High school currently has air conditioning, but we've got air conditioning slated for Beach Street, Paul J. Baloo, and Udel auditoriums coming shortly. We discussed all of the open projects that are going on between the Capital Reserve and the, the bond projects. So there's many projects underway. Some of the highlights that we talked about was the water bottle fillers. There were some delays, those should be completed, as well as the bathroom renovations. We've got the Beach Street generator, you know, again, we're still waiting for some ports with some COVID delays, but we've got Masonery here at the high school for some wall that was, was needing some repair, where work was coming in. The next item that we talked about was window stops on, on the windows, first-floor windows for security. We did have discussion, and we are continuing to discuss that. New York State wants a full egress, although all the windows should be able to be opened for security reasons. You know, so that's under discussion, that's the New York State recommendation. You know, we, we took into consideration having the window stops in there preventing intruders from getting in as a security concern. Their concern is that there's an emergency getting out of the building. So we're still in discussion, just want to make sure everyone was aware of that, that that is being discussed. We did talk about the Vessera project, and thanks for everyone who was involved with that presentation tonight. We'll take that and have further discussions as to the prior recommendations. The Barbary turf field was replaced this summer. But just to be clear, that was replaced under warranty, so there was no monetary layout from the school district. There were some issues with the turf, the turf itself, and all of the work was done at no charge, covered by warranty. So we have another brand-new turf on the Barbary fields. Last but not least, we did get an approximate cost of air conditioning of all of the educational rooms in all of the schools. It looks to be approximately about eight million dollars. We think that number is going to be going up, as we all know inflation is going up every month. So we're going to go back and get some, some hard costs on that, the basic piece of electric that needs to be done. We are looking to potentially marry that up against our Second Capital Reserve, so dollars are in there. Now, if that project does take place, which we've been pushing forward to, to do an analysis on, the public would have to vote on spending that Second Capital Reserve to fund the air conditioning project. Now, typically, that's done in May during the school budget vote, but if we want to expedite the process, we could only do a special vote for that to be determined. So it's not limited to just wait for May and then wait for a year for that. So we want to get additional costs, have more discussion, and put it up for, but that's, that will be voted on by the community. The meeting ended at 8:45, and just want to say thanks to all of the custodial staff that's out there currently, believe it or not, getting the buildings ready for the 29th and 30th. They do a wonderful job over the summer, as all of us are hopefully enjoying our summer vacations there, the schools getting everything ready. And, you know, they did the yeoman's task over the last two years, getting the buildings ready, coming back from COVID, but in the normal standard process, that entire team gets the buildings ready every day. I just want to commend them for all of their work that they do all year, but especially at these times during the heat, getting ready for our children to come back in a couple weeks. Meeting adjourned, and look forward to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCann. We do have a first reading regarding for the policy committee. This is policy number 1512, and that is the use of video conferencing at public meetings. Okay, on to financial matters and business items with Miss Palati.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. The treasures report for the month of May had a beginning balance of $73,770,892.29 and ending balance of $82,341,321.24. We have a motion for the approval of budget transfers 4211 to 4212 and 4221, general funds, and 4213 through 4224, capital fund.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the contracts as listed on your agenda.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of surplus miscellaneous books at Udall Road Middle School.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of change order for macaron plumbing in the amount of $26,998.11 for the Beach Street's generator installation.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the resolutions as listed on your agenda.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
We have a motion for the approval of the request for proposals as listed on your agenda.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Ms. Palati. Can I have a motion for the approval of after-school kids under supervision incorporated fourth amendment to lease agreement? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have approval of the director of school safety terms of employment? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have approval of the memorandum agreement regarding West Side Teachers Association Teaching Assistance Chapter Negotiating Agreement? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So the district just approved the teaching assistance that will be effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2026. Some of the highlights regarding the memorandum agreement include salary increases each year, which are based on the state issued allowance growth factor that is based upon change in CPI for the year ending December 31, with a minimum of 1% and a maximum of 2%. Two additional steps will be added to the salary schedule. The amount of unused accumulated sick days paid out at retirement was increased from 40 days to 45 days. Teaching assistants will now be permitted to participate in night shift plan, that's what I was planning, in which the district will contribute 50% towards the individual premium, and for the family plan, the district will contribute 50% on the individual premium plus 35% of the difference between the individual and family premium, and all longevity increments were increased by $300. We are also walking on to the agenda tonight, the approval of the contract for Local 237. So can I have a motion to approve the operations unit 237? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. The operations unit, formerly known as the UPS EU, consists of our district custodians, maintenance, bus drivers, and food service workers. The district is approving the memorandum agreement, as we just did. That will be effective July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2026. Some of the highlights include salary increase for each year are based on state issued allowance growth factor that is based upon the change in CPI for the year, ending December 31, with a minimum of 1% and a maximum of 2%, effective July 1, 2022. Two additional steps will be added to the salary schedule. Effective July 1, 2022, all longevity increments were increased by $200. Effective July 1, 2020, the custodial worker at three position will receive a $200 increase to the annual stipend. Effective July 1, 2023, the employees who were hired prior to July 1, 2014 will increase their employee health contribution from 7.5% to 8% of the premium. It will increase to 9% of the premium effective July 1, 2024, and then 10% of the premium effective July 1, 2025. Effective July 1, 2024, the employees who were hired on or after July 1, 2014 will increase their employee health contribution from 15% to 16% of the premium. And then finally, can I have a motion of approval of the final contract for Easton Suffolkosys Cooperative Education Services for 2021, 2022? Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to our Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Tussi. First, I'd like to give a big thank you to all of our staff members who have been working so diligently preparing our buildings and our facilities and grounds to welcome our students and staff back in short two and a half weeks. To this wonderful community, I would like to thank you for a fabulous 28 years. I've had a connection to West Side since 1963, when my parents bought their home, and I'm planning to continue to be at all of those wonderful games and robotics competitions and concerts, et cetera. So if you take X to see me there, not so far away. I want to thank you all for the privilege to serve you, and I'm to all good help, good friends, and much peace and joy. And now I will see the remainder of my time to that before.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. First off, I'd just like to thank everyone in the community for the warm welcome that I've received. This is a wonderful community, as Mrs. Burns said, and I'm just looking forward to many great years ahead working here. Looking forward to making everyone in this room proud over the next few years. I have an amazing team here working with me, and I'm really excited to see all the amazing things we've accomplished together. Really looking forward to welcoming our staff back on, teachers and staff back on the 29th, and our students back for the first day of school, very exciting on the 30th of this month. Been missing meeting with staff and community members during this past few weeks. I've been here doing candidate's role positions with Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Morrison, and we're really excited for the start of the school year. We've also been working to finalize our school and district emergency response plans. I'll be attending a school safety summit next week with Mr. McLevy, who's our director of safety, and we've already now represented us from law enforcement to ensure a safe start of the school year. I also just want to say a special thank you to Mrs. Burns and express my appreciation for all that you've shared with me over the past two weeks. I feel like it's been longer than two weeks. A lot of information that was shared, but really, I plan to honor all that you've created here, and self-respect with your grace in challenging situations, your deep knowledge of education, your true caring for students in the district, and all connections that you've made in the community. And I really just wish you the best here in my part.
Thank you, both Mrs. Burns and Dr. Romanelli.
Mr. Burns, for, you know, in my entire time on the board, she's been fabulous. I've known her before that. She's been a tremendous asset in this district, and she's leading the district in great shape. And I can't say enough good things about her and everything that she's done to steward through some very, very tough times. And both in her, from when she was superintendent to now, and just want to say thank you for everything.
I think not only on behalf of the board, but on behalf of the community, we all say thank you as well. Everybody have a cleanup? All right, I do have one notice or reminder I'd like to offer. On August 22, Suffolk County Police and Homeland Security will be conducting a school safety exercise on district grounds. We are providing the grounds, so you might see a lot of police cars, other vehicles, whether they're ESU trucks or ambulances. Cannot guarantee helicopters will not be landing on our grounds, but in the event that you wonder what's going on, it is an exercise being conducted by Suffolk County Police and Homeland Security. This information will be shared with the community, and it will also be shared with us, with what they're going through, what findings they have. It is something that hopefully key information we can use to help better our school security. I don't know if anybody has anything they want to add about that. I know for me, I will be down there in a observation capacity, I'm very much looking forward to this. If you need any kind of mannequins or dummies, I'll be the first to go.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Tussi. I think it's, spread the word, because it will be a very large event going on on Monday, the 22nd, at the school, and people may start to wonder what's happening, why are helicopters, why are there really tremendous amount of fire and rescue? We will, I see Mr. McCabe saying we should do a robocall. We'll communicate, we'll communicate to, yeah, we'll communicate to the public, because we don't want anyone to panic. But it is a good, it is a good thing for us to evaluate the school and how it's going to develop.
We'll have some kind of official notification that goes out in addition to this. Okay, I do have one item, one card for someone who would like to speak, that is Mr. DiVernardo, so if you could come up, please.
Hello, everybody. I was on the Masera Committee, not the Star Committee, but their overall election committee, and one, a few points I want to elaborate on that, I really touched on in the last presentation. In regards to repurposing the school, one thing to keep in mind, we've looked at the cost of repurposing it, potentially at $6 to $10 million. We've looked at the cost of what the rental income would be, and then you also have to maintain the building during that period of time. It really didn't make sense to me forward with that, because we're looking at the time duration of like 30 years to break even potentially, and then also evolving to the real estate, commercial real estate market. A lot of schools, as Mr. Burns had mentioned, that are going to want the rental, and we would just be wanting to pay. So I think, you know, if you, whatever considers looking at that option, I think it's a very fruitful option, just for the fact that now you have like one of those that you're inheriting and adopting, and you're currently using education out of the commercial real estate market, and the ups and downs of that, and trying to get a tenant, meaning you don't have a tenant, you just have the burden of, you know, maintaining that property. So that's one thing to keep in mind. Also, if you were thinking of repurposing the facility, the point of putting West Side students in there, right now we're getting by with the schools, the schools that we currently have. We have excess capacity in some of those schools to take on a new swarm and try to find a way to feed and work with the extent of the extensive cost to the taxpayer, possibly that they pretty much sense. One thing that was mentioned in repurposing the facility, that for some reason, say, single-family homes doesn't work, doesn't get approved by the community, which is more sensible of the options. One other option, which, talking with Mr. Bossy, is leasing the roof. You could have a roof collapse at any time, and if you have to go down, you know, three or four years, you could have a cash drop in value for that building in that period of time, if the district had to somehow manage it and take care of it. So one thing that would be one-time cost, say, yes, we cost the demolition, we'll be around $2 million from some different things we've earned. So if the district does take that initial cost, that $1 million, that $2 million hit, and then just turn it into athletic fields that we can use, it's a one-time hit, we have some maintenance costs, but there are maintenance costs that we're voting right now anyway, that will be around $5,000 a year. So just keep those in mind, in a sense, the district is selling the property, having the building taken down, sell the single-family homes. But as far as repurposing the facility, spend that kind of money, invest that, it really doesn't make sense in any way, because as you know, if you have a normal home, you're just, you don't know what you're going to run into until you start to get into it, and there's no way to know what's supposed to involve that building until you start getting into it, taking big jobs.
Okay, well, thank you for your feedback, and again, thank you for your time with the community, much appreciated. Okay, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn to executive session where we'll discuss personnel negotiations and litigation. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Have a great night, everybody, and enjoy those last few weeks of summer, so that all end.